Okay, we are reconvening the public session, roll call, all board members are present, so we have forum for tonight's meeting. Public comments on agenda and non agenda items. Pursuant to Board Policy number two three five zero, public comment may be limited to five minutes per person or thirty minutes per topic. All speakers who would like to comment regarding the matter on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the Board President or Recording Secretary prior to the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. All speakers who would like to comment regarding the matter not on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the Board President or Recording Secretary prior to the point in the meeting for open forum on non agenda items. Public comment cards are available at the information table at the rear of the boardroom from the Recording Secretary or online. Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Buffalo.
Again with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Agenda approval, may your motion? Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item ten, open forum on non agenda items. I have one card.
Good evening, can you hear me? All right, I would like to speak about something that maybe we haven't heard about in a while. Surprise, surprise, I'm not going to talk to you about COVID right this minute, I'm sure you're all relieved by that. I wanted to speak about AP twenty five ten. So for people unaware, the college has a set of sort of governing documents, the board policies and administrative procedures. And I wanted to bring forward an ongoing concern and I hope to spark curiosity perhaps in some of the board members or other people present. In particular, AP twenty five ten covers participation in local decision making. In particular, the workings of the College Coordinating Council or CCC. It covers a bunch of other things as well, but in particular CCC. It covers membership. There are seven listed members for CCC. The superintendent, the superintendent of president and or vice presidents representing the Board of Trustees, that's the first one, the academic senate president, the Administrative Council representative, the president of the faculty exclusive bargaining unit, the president of the classified exclusive bargaining unit, the CMS unit representative and the ASO representative. It also covers how the College Coordinating Council works. In particular, it states that the council shall seek consensus as the basis for making decisions. However, when consensus cannot be reached, the council may take action if six out of seven council members are in agreement. When a resolution before the council does not have the required six out of seven members in favor, the status quo remains in effect until such time as a mutually acceptable resolution can be negotiated and agreed to by six of the seven members of the council. It goes on to say that all council members have a single vote and the meetings of the council shall be open. I do have a point to this, this also covers timelines. In particular, it says each committee will also circulate a call for agenda items five working days prior to a meeting and distribute to members and post an agenda two working days prior to a meeting. Each committee will also distribute to members and post a draft of unapproved minutes within ten working days after a meeting. I have concerns about the function of CCC this semester. First, agendas frequently list multiple members and attendees, a recent agenda listed eleven committee members and the ABC website lists ten. AP twenty five ten itself specifies seven. Second, meetings have included a verbal request for agenda items for the next meeting, but Wednesday's upcoming meeting is the first I've seen this semester to have an official call for agenda items. Thirdly, meetings have had their agendas and their minutes posted late. When I've tried to speak up about these issues, I'm accused of being obstructionist and told that this committee doesn't operate under the Brown Act. No, it doesn't operate under the Brown Act, but it is supposed to operate under AP twenty five ten. I firmly believe that college committees do need to follow the administrative procedures of the college. It's not obstructionist to ask and expect that the college follow its own procedures, thank you.
Thank you. Item eleven, presentations. Item eleven point one, presentation of constitutional essay contest winners.
Is that it? It's so great to be back, I just wanted to tell you this, how happy I am just to be standing here and just being in the presence of you. I just, I just feel great, if I could, I would hug all of you right now. So I'm really excited and I just wanted to share with you a couple of great outstanding stories about our students and what we've been doing. And before I get started, I just want to tell you a little background about the essay real quick. The Constitutional Essay Program was actually originated years before Ed got here, but we never really got it. And then one day, Ed Knutson just dropped this little constitution booklet on my, in my office and he said, hey, let's do an essay contest and I'll give a hundred dollars. And that was like nine years ago, I believe. And you know, when we started doing this, we got like four or five submissions. You know, we got a, you know, a couple, it wasn't really, really a big churn out of students. And then this year with Dr. Zimmerman and ASO, they're just so grateful and so supportive and Dr. Zimmerman has always been someone who's been very active behind the scenes with this particular contest. Pointing up this idea that, well, we'll get five hundred dollars for the first place, three hundred dollars for the second place, one hundred dollars for third place, fifty dollars for fourth place, twenty five dollars for, you know, fifth place, which was awesome, right? And I just have to just share this with you, every year I've had maybe, maybe nineteen essays, at the most, I think we had nineteen essays. And I had eight readers and I just want to just share this with you, eight readers from different faculty members across, across the discipline. I was like, oh, this will take you like, you know, less than a day, it would be an easy, easy project. Well, lo and behold, when we put out this new essay and the amount of money that we were offering, we got over a hundred submissions. Needless to say, the faculty members that read this were shocked and when I had to tell them that we had to have this done in four days. And some of them being English majors were great, but I just want to tell you, it was just fascinating to see this and it's just such a nice thing to just see how wonderful our students are. You know, and you just think about just the interactions that we have and, and, and I just have to tell you, this SOAR school is killing it right now. SOAR just kind of cleaned up the top four spots, but I'll get to that in a second. But I just wanted to just thank Ed and Dr. Zimmerman for just the, you know, the innovation behind this and constantly asking me to continue doing this and it's been a lot of fun and it's been a great way to interact with our students. And I just wanted to tell you, some of the readers are Tuana Catley, Heidi Williams, Nari Caseforth, Ellen Coleman, Dr. Ellen Coleman, Dr. Matthew Jaffe, Dr. Ken Schaefer, Ray Agahari, Mark Hofer and my colleague Fritz Hemker. So we were the readers and we had this cross board, cross discipline. And if I may, I just want to call up students one by one, if you could all come up when I tell you to. The first one is not here right now, her name's Haley Gonzalez and Haley came in fifth place. And Haley is a poli sci major and she is splitting her time between Cal State Long Beach and ABC. And she works full time at forty hours a week as a teller at Wells Fargo. So she's juggling this and she decides it and Haley were former students of both Fritz and I, so she was the fifth place. Rocio Rivera, I don't know if I need to say much about her, but I'd love her to come up. And I just wanted to sort of tell you something about Rocio, I mean, I know the board knows her, right? And I mean, she's amazing, right? She's a superwoman, she's just, just got a bright, bright future. Rocio won this two years ago, okay, so she won the first essay and then it's funny, she just keeps raking in the money from these operations. But I just want to, I've had, I've had the opportunity to teach Rocio for three classes with her, but she's applying to Harvard, Yale and Princeton, just to name a few schools of what she's doing. Nissan, can you please come on up, buddy? Everybody, this is Nissan, he is a SOAR student. And Nissan is right now just trying to figure things out, he's a liberal arts science major. He plans on applying to various UCs, he's only a junior, so I think he's got another shot at the, at the essay net requirements next year. And he loves playing basketball and listening to music in his free time, so this is Nissan. Morgan Carter, can you come on up? Stand here, Nissan. Morgan Carter is a biochemistry major, this is what she wants to study. She plans to go to the UCs and she has a passion for reading, drawing and painting as well. And finally, the winner of it of this is Angela Ortiz, can you come on up, Angela? Angela is a liberal arts major, she's studying humanities and she wants, she's really into art. And so she really, her goal one day is maybe to hopefully study art in London and she enjoys painting and playing games. So I just wanted to just introduce all of them to you, this was a really great opportunity and I just really thank Ed and Zimmerman for expanding this program, for providing the money and getting us, and I just have to tell you, the SOAR, just SOAR won four out of the top five spots, I just want to put that out there, like that was pretty impressive. And I do, I'll just say this one thing, there were probably within points, this could have changed within points. I mean, they were, the essays were so close, the top twenty were so close, we're just talking about one tenth of a score. So I mean, out of eight different readers, this was pretty impressive how we all lined up and picked these students. So members of the board, I just wanted to thank you for this time and, and thank you for having these wonderful students, so thank you very much, Pat.
Thank you. Item eleven point two, enrollment update.
Good evening, President, Board President Adams, trustees, President Knutson, thank you for the opportunity to share a few words about enrollment. And congratulations to the students, that's impressive group there and also thanks to the faculty that are involved in the reading. I wanted to just share a little bit about enrollment and given that we're in declining enrollment right now and have been for many years from high school seniors to dealing with the pandemic and then looking at the system itself losing over three hundred thousand students in twenty twenty one, nearly fifteen percent. It's important that we keep enrollment on the, on the agenda. So as you all know, enrollment management, enrollment itself is a participatory process of event activity to include everyone. So we have, as you see, the amazing faculty who are constantly doing different things to engage students, to bring them to campus, to engage and they attract students, the programs attract students. And so it's, it's an all hands on deck activity and it's very much appreciated, whether it's the programs and STEM, the nursing program, the respiratory tech program, these are the programs that, some of the programs that attract our students, so it's, it's all hands on. And enrollment management is not something that we ever turn off, so it, we never turned it off, we keep it going. We're always trying to be innovative, we're coming up with new ideas, but we keep it going at all times. And just to get us to, oh, I gotta turn, ABC, as you all saw in previous, and definitely can't see that, but basically twenty twenty one, as you know already, we lost over three thousand students. And that's, we heard about the fiscal impact of that and how of an emergency it really is if we don't increase enrollment. We've seen many presentations on that, there's also human cost in that because there are students like the ones you just saw who are not in class right now, are not at the college. And we just happen to believe that this is the best place to transform their lives. So we want them here, we were trying to get them back for the, for what we can do to them, what, what it does for the community. The community expects that we have over five hundred transfer students a year and thousands and thousands of degrees every year. And so it's, it's a big deal and we're not taking it lightly. So this is why we always keep, keep it on. And this, this here is just a few colleges to compare, you see, we're all over the place in terms of colleges with declining enrollment. Some as high as thirty and some not as high, but it's, you know, pretty much we're all experiencing the same thing. I work very closely on the board with the CSSOs and we discuss our enrollment, we discuss strategies and, and we're all pretty much doing the same things, we're all pretty much facing the same experiences. But so, I also want to just give you a glimpse of what it's looking like in twenty twenty one, what it was looking like. So I included some demographics because I think it's important to know, who are we missing? Who, who's not here? Where are they at? And so there's just a little data there and like California, we're also experiencing a larger decline in male students, African American students. And not like, we're, we're a little bit unique in this way, we're, we have a higher declining of white students. And so we pay attention to who's not, who are we not serving in the community? And then we have different approaches to how we engage those different groups. So some of the strategies, you know, we, we look at the whole student and when they first, we first identify them from recruitment to enrolling, retention to completion. And it's important that we have a lot of programs and services all along the way to retain them because we don't want to start from scratch over and over again. So we have to treat our students well when they're here, like what you just saw, the presentation is happening in many places around the campus. I won't read all of them because you all have it, but I just want to name a, mention a few things, I was very excited when we sent a reminder for registration via text. Students, you know, they, we're on social media, we're, we're beginning to text, we're going to ramp it up quite a bit when we get oscillate. But with that, we have to talk what's going to work best for them. And so we do social media, marketing has done an amazing job, they're very responsive when we have ideas and suggestions and strategies as well as ITS. So in the marketing, as we mentioned, very intentional in everything we're doing, we're looking at the data to see, you know, where, where do we need to market? How do we need to market and we do those things. Some of the outreach efforts and you all can see this in your packet, but these are things that go on all the time, that the daily calls to students. When, just because a student enrolls, it doesn't mean that they're gonna, or excuse me, that they apply, it doesn't mean that they're going to enroll in class. So our, our outreach, our first, second year experience, they do amazing job making sure that not only do they apply, but we get them to enroll and we assist them all along the way. We, we attend the community events, two S K is one of our larger events and we're hoping to get it back to what it once was, where we have, you know, over a thousand students participate and they're engaged and they take place, they take part in our first and second year experience. We also do a course of the high school business and team up with the STEM conference and, and assist and take advantage of them being on our campus. And you see some of the different activities, so there's registration assistance, there's a reg week and then VP Saber led Reg Fest where we had students come on a particular day and we'll do it again at Palmdale, which is, you know, a target area that we need to target to make sure that we're providing all the resources and exposure to the Palmdale population as well. And so some of the categorical work that we've done is every student from twenty twenty that either took an emergency withdraw or didn't enroll in fall, we called them and we said, you know, how can we get you back, how can we help you? What do you need? And we were able to get over three thousand calls, we were able to get six hundred students that had no indication they were going to return. They didn't register, they didn't take advantage of their appointment, so we don't know if they were going to come, but they did come after this work. And so I, I really want to just commend, as part of what I want to do today, is commend the efforts that are happening. And we are in a pandemic, so it doesn't always look like the efforts are taking place, but they absolutely are. And if there's anything that's, that, any activity that's going on that, that we're not doing, we certainly want to know so we can do that. We also expand the use of the different platforms to make sure that we can reach the students that do not want to come to campus when we're closed. So we really ramped that up quite a bit as well. And this is just a quick shot, you can't see it, but you probably, hopefully you can, your packet, but this is just shows the different programs and, and the collaborative work that's happening between the programs for recruitment, outreach, retention. And so that way we could better collaborate and better plan. And some of the additional efforts that we've made before the pandemic, but we continue to do, I think it's very important, we, we're pushing students to take fifteen units. We're telling them the advantages, the, the completion advantages, the financial advantages. Because there are students that if they just take one more class, one more class, they can get four thousand dollars more. And it's not all about the money, but for, for many students, it is all about the money, it allows them to come here, it allows them to not have to work as much. I mean, we all have the stories, we have students that are working a couple of days a week and only taking a half a load when they could have made more money just going to, going to, taking a full load on campus or working on campus. So we're always trying to continue to remind them of the benefits. One of the things we're doing with Edge and Nav is we've asked them to do a opt out. So if a student registers for under fifteen units, say a student registered for six, they're going to give them reminders of the things I just mentioned, like how much they can get if they, they could receive from the completion grant or from financial aid and then give them the research of how they're more likely to graduate if they take a full load. Sometimes they don't, they don't kind of, I, I mean, I get it, life happens, some students can only take six, twelve units or three units and we're going to support that, but we want to make sure that they know what they're losing out on or potentially losing out on if they don't take a full load. One more thing that was, well, two things, one, we're doing, new this year is we're sending every high school senior a letter that, in the high school district, that basically welcomes them to ABC saying, congratulations. Haven't been a high school administrator, I remember some of the seniors and I was a senior once too, almost a senior again. But I was a senior once where, in my experience, we're going to high school where students kind of forget to plan after high school. They're enjoying their last few months so well that they just, that, that some don't plan. So we're going to kind of remind them, hey, it's time to get going again and their parents are going to probably read the letters as well. And I'm sure they're going to push them out the door to ABC and we're going to assist them when they get here. Not just getting them here, but supporting them along the way. And one other thing that was, was, was powerful is that VP Saber organized a faculty presentation on our ideas of what can we do with enrollment. Shammy presented and scared everybody regarding the budget and declining enrollment. And then I presented some of the things that we're doing in student services and then we just say, hey, what, what ideas do you have? And the main thing is that we have, again, we're all hands on, it takes us all. And I have to tell you that I'm very happy with the work that's being done in the areas in particular that I, because I see it closer that I oversee. They're, they're not taking any breaks, the pandemic is not an excuse. We're going to continue to do the best job we can to make sure that we get more students here enrolled in the campus. Any questions?
Questions or comments from the board, Mr. Reed?
Thank you for the presentation, Vice President. You know, I've listened to about thirty webinars since I've been on the board for about a year. And this problem is statewide. Like twenty percent at some colleges where they've lost twenty percent of their, I'm interested. You have the statistics of the loss of students that are enrolled in community colleges that are primarily trade tech type colleges. Do you have any idea how many people they lost?
No, I don't, I, I tend to focus on the community colleges. But I'd imagine that they're experiencing a similar, that's a good question, because I haven't looked at it, but I don't know what.
Okay, when we dedicated Sage Hall the other few weeks ago, they passed out this little book with the packet. And it listed the ten, the top ten declared majors that Antelope Valley College. Number one was registered nursing, you can get a job tomorrow with that. Biology and biological services, you probably get a lab, get a lab job with that. Administration of Justice, you could probably get probation with that. Aircraft fabrication, sure, you get a job tomorrow if you get through that program. And child and family education, so about five of these, you can get a job tomorrow or near tomorrow. And I'm wondering if we can focus in the future on these jobs because in one of these webinars, I think the acting chancellor of the system went to a college in the San Fernando Valley and she talked to the students and one of the students said something that impressed her, will this help me get a job? And I think that's what they're looking for now, they don't have time to goof off and go to college for six years and come out with a hundred and twenty units with no job. We're going to have to offer it to students, we're doing everything right, recruiting, providing everything we can, but we have to have a curriculum where they feel like they can get out of here in two years and get a job, make a living. And a lot of these students are low income students and they have to do it, it's not something they want to do, they have to get a job.
Okay, thank you. Trust me, I have to tell you that it's, ABC is doing its part, not to say that we can't improve and do better because we always can, but we do have great statistics on career to work, or work to career, sorry. We're also looking at those professions where they have to retool because maybe the pandemic has changed what they can do. Maybe they don't want to be vaccinated and now they have to go in a different career. We're doing targeted advertising, we met with marketing just last week to talk about some of, you know, what are we advertising and who can we target?
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Um, Dr. Bynes, I don't know if the page isn't numbered, but on your page where it has the age groups and it starts with nineteen or less and you've got thirty four point four percent. And I'm assuming this is for twenty twelve, twenty twenty one as stipulated there. Can you compare for me or give me a comparison to what that age bracket, what was the enrollment like? Let's say two thousand nineteen, twenty, pre-COVID, in the fall of two thousand nineteen. What was our percent of nineteen or less enrolling at ABC?
You know, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I'm going to tell you, that's probably not too much less than thirty four percent because that's going to be many of our SOAR students, special admits and then also our, our, our first time freshmen. When I was looking at the, the high school yields, we were about thirty percent, but I don't have it yet for, I actually put a request in, but I don't have it for twenty, well, we, I don't have for twenty twenty, twenty one, twenty two, because it'd only be looking at fall. But for twenty twenty one, I don't have that one yet, the high school yield.
Yeah, I was talking about two thousand nineteen, the fall, my, my, my thought is, and I could be wrong, that's why I was asking, is that the number would be higher in nineteen or less enrollees, pre-COVID?
Yes.
Is what I'm thinking, so I'm, so I think there is, in my, in my personal opinion, there is a lot of research out there that would say that online classes and distance learning has impacted the number of students who want to attend college period, whether it's community or, or Cal State UC. I also wanted to ask you, I think I heard you mention that, did you say that you, the college was reaching out to high schools? Does that mean that we are going to the high schools or are we bringing those students on our campus?
So during the pandemic, I was more virtual and we're trying to do more face to face, but we're still doing a lot of virtual workshops. But if I can real quickly go back to the high school yield, prior to the pandemic, we were doing what we expected, it was pretty consistent. I just don't know, I'm sure it dropped for incoming freshmen, they were part of that enrollment that dropped, no doubt. As far as the outreach efforts, we're still doing a lot of virtual, but we're, we are making more face to face attempts at this, at this point. They'll have us, we'll, we'll be there, but there's still a lot of virtual and we keep the virtual because we're able to do more with the virtual. So we still have that in our library, if you will.
I, I think that there may have been, if you, if you look at the, some of the data from, from high schools around, many of the students during COVID, distance learning did not do well, many of the grades, there was a Many of the grades, there was a decrease in grades. Some of them perhaps may have seen, why would I continue that if that's what they're also offering at the community college? I didn't do well with it. We know there was, there's tremendous learning loss that occurred during that time. My, my question is, I remember about six years ago, six or seven years ago, I brought busloads of eighth graders to this campus. I don't know if you'll remember that. Dr. Vines, they were fed lunch with their parents and their parents got a tour of the community college. And I remember parents making statements such as, oh, oh my God, I had no idea they had this program or that program. So it was, it was more like seeing was believing for our, our parents in the community. I think that the first chance we get to bring our students and our parents on this campus, whether we feed them a Subway sandwich or not, but to really let them explore and especially see some of the new construction and the learning center and all these great things that are happening on our college. We might be able to pull back many of those students and say, hey, we're a great place to be, just, just a suggestion.
Absolutely. We're face to face in spring and we're going to make a huge effort. And back up to your comment about taking class online and your experience with high school students. When we called those students and some of them, I called myself because I was really curious about what's going on when we first went to the pandemic. They said that they, they don't learn well online. And we often hear different people think, oh, students only go to community college because of financial aid. But these students, some of them in poverty, would rather forego ten thousand dollars and not damage their transcript because that wasn't a good way that they felt they can learn. And we tried to support them with different avenues of online support. When you look at a full financial aid package, her funding, Karen's funding, it ends up being a substantial amount. And the student said, I'd rather wait until you go back face to face. And then there's some students that prefer face to face. So there's no good, there's no easy answer with that. Any other questions?
Any other questions for Dr. Vines?
Thank you.
Very much. Moving on to item twelve, report of closed session action. There were no reportable closed session actions taken. Item thirteen consent agenda. I have speaker cards for thirteen point one and thirteen point nineteen. So I hear a motion to accept and approve consent agenda items thirteen point two to thirteen point eighteen. All right. In that case, may I hear a motion to approve consent agenda items thirteen point two to thirteen point seventeen? Discussion, advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose, passes with five yes votes. Item thirteen point one, Pamela Ford.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Administrators, Honored Guests, Staff and Students. For the record, I would like included in the minutes that my statement during constituent reports was interrupted. It was not just statements made, but interruptions which cut into my time and my time was not reinstated. It's not reflected in the minutes. That's why I brought it up.
I'm going to suggest that the president review the transcripts for, or the audio recording for that meeting to determine whether that's the case or not.
As a, as a point, we do not do verbatim minutes. We do action items and annotated minutes.
In that case, I'll hear a motion to accept consent agenda item thirteen point one as written. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, passes with five yes votes. Revision of Board Policy two, three, four, five, public participation, Board meetings, Mr. Reeves.
Everyone on this board.
Microphone.
Everyone on this board is here because the people voted for it. We represent the people. And it reminds me of an old Saturday Evening Post portrait by Norman Rockwell. And some of the old timers on the board may have remembered it. It's a, it's a man standing up in a crowded meeting. He has suspenders on and a flannel shirt and he's talking and everybody's looking at him. And that's, that's democracy. And we live in a democracy. We also live in a republic where we elect people to represent us. We don't have time to be involved in all the affairs of government. So we elect people to represent us and they in turn have one employee usually that they hire, a president, CEO, to do their body. I think it's incumbent that the public have as much time as necessary to get up and address the board. We have five minutes now. They want to cut it down to three. Well, we can rectify some problems. We can devise a forum for the public where they can put the topic at the top. It advises them, what do you want the board to do? And then with an explanation. So they would be more organized and wouldn't take up so much time. But yet they would have five minutes to discuss the item. I've addressed many boards in this valley. Some of the boards give you two minutes, three minutes. We're the only ones that give you five. As far as I'm concerned, you should have all the time you need because it's very difficult to get up in front, in front of these boards, believe me. And you need time to explain yourself and we, sometimes we can't ask, we can answer your questions, but we can't have a dialogue with you. So I would hope that these two items would be pulled and not voted on tonight. And we think about this before we curtail the right of the public to speak for five minutes. Thank you.
Further discussion on thirteen point eighteen?
Mr. President, point of order? Since trustee Reeves addressed both of them together, do you want to take them as a single item and address them together?
Yes, please.
We have cards on both.
Okay.
Any other discussion on thirteen point eighteen? Hearing now may hear a motion to approve thirteen point eighteen. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I'm sorry, did you say aye?
Aye.
Passes with four yes votes and one no vote, Mr. Reeves. Item thirteen point nineteen, revision of board policy two, three, five, zero speakers, and I have cards from Aurora Burg.
Good evening again. I think I'm going to be somewhat echoing in the vein of what Mr. Reeves just said. It's generally a bad idea, in my opinion, to censor and stifle public comment. Couple of thoughts I'd like to share on that is that this is really the only forum where faculty, staff, students and the community can speak with you guys and have the opportunity of looking you in the eye while we speak and being sure that you are hearing us. Yes, I know we can send emails and, you know, snail mail. But we rarely receive replies to that, not even a, you know, received thank you. This is a unique forum in terms of our ability to address our elected officials. I would also like to state that in my belief, based on AP twenty five ten, this should not have been advanced to the board. Besides the problems with calls for agenda items and late posting of agendas and draft minutes. AP twenty five ten does specify that decision-making process for CCC, for which six of seven votes must be in favor. Otherwise, the status quo is kept. I spoke against recommending this AP to the board on August twenty fifth. And on October thirteenth, I had to leave the meeting at ten thirty one after it's end time for another meeting prior to the vote. My understanding is that the classified union president voted against moving this item to the board. And I was both absent and had spoken against this item on a previous agenda. I'm confused as to how I could have voted in favor when I wasn't present to get to that six out of seven number. I have asked how this item was advanced to the board without six of seven members in favor. And I've received responses about, you know, consensus and so forth. But when I review AP twenty five ten, I keep seeing that line about six of seven in favor. It doesn't say that, you know, five of seven. It says six of seven. In addition, given that the board agenda for last month should have been finalized in advance of the October eleventh board meeting, which was then changed to October eighteenth. I'm still confused as to how this item got onto the agenda last month because I don't think the timeline even lined up. I, I don't believe this item should be on the agenda at this time and I believe it should be returned to CCC until there is a six of seven vote in favor advancement. Another issue that I have with this is that usually changes on these items are shown in red in the agenda when you go on board docs and you look at the PDF of it. And I don't see that right now. It's like all in black and I don't see the strike throughs or changes shown. And I think that's misleading and not the tone we should be taking here. So I would urge you to amend tonight's agenda to return this item to CCC. Until such time as CCC does vote in accordance with AP twenty five ten, six of seven in favor to advance this item to the board. Thank you.
Good evening again. I did indeed vote against this moving forward for all the reasons that Aurora just stated. I'm not sure of the district or board's intention to limit public speaking to a maximum of three minutes. In some districts, when an individual is speaking on behalf of groups, the speaker is allowed ten minutes if they're speaking for a large body. I have observed at the Board of Governors meeting that although there are many speakers, some expressing positions maybe against or in opposition to what either the chancellor or the Board of Governors is discussing. I've never observed the, any level of disrespect toward the speaker. Over the years here at ABC, there have been occasions in which the public, as well as staff, have presented opposing positions to the Board of Trustees. And not once has the Board of Trustees ever limited the length of time individuals speak. It was a time with different leadership and opposing positions were respected. It was always within the five minutes. The issue for the board to consider is the actions of district leadership when many individuals come forward to present an opposing position. The lesson is like throwing out the baby with the bathwater because maybe you don't want to hear the message that's being presented. The length of time a person speak is not going to force individuals to agree if they have an opposing position. Therefore, as the president for classified, for the classified bargaining unit, I respectfully request that the board consider not limiting public comment to three minutes. Thank you.
May I hear a motion to approve agenda item thirteen point nineteen? Is there a second? There is no second. Thirteen point nineteen is removed from the agenda. Item fourteen, action items, fourteen point one, approval of academic policies and procedures, AP and P, committee's recommendations of course listing. May I hear a motion? Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point two, approval of resolution twenty one dash twenty two slash six, resolution to lay off positions. May I hear a motion? Discussion? I have a speaker card, Pam Ford.
I'm speaking, can I take this off? I'm speaking as the classified union president on behalf of Christopher Chason due to the resolution to lay off. It is important that you're aware of the history. For years, Chris has been bringing forth legitimate safety concerns regarding his work environment, which have not been resolved. As an example, one of the most egregious safety concerns was Chris asked to be provided drinking water during a heat wave. He was given no valid response. So the federation supported his request and submitted a request for information to the district regarding if water was provided. The district response was yes. However, after investigation on the part of the federation, it was observed that there was no drinking fountain. There was a drinking fountain. The caps were removed. However, when you look up on the wall, there's a sign which denotes the drinking water is not drinkable. Sorry, this mask business. Anyway. So what we'd like to know is since the district's own safety manuals clearly states the water is to be provided. Why was water not provided? That was a simple request. Chris even asked his supervisor to go to his work area to view the safety issues he presented, which did not happen. And there was, there were serious irrigation issues in the greenhouse, to name a few of the concerns that needed to be addressed. When Mr. Chason initiated a harassment complaint regarding his most recent supervisor, he felt unsafe because she held staff meetings with LA County sheriffs posted outside the door at most of the meetings. And her behavior of sarcasm and insults. And the meetings were unproductive and there was no clear directives given in pursuit of helping him with the unsafe conditions he reported. Not to mention the documented threats of disciplinary action for being out ill. The district first requested a meeting and the federation followed up with the same request to try and resolve the harassment issues. Along with their response to the request for information, which I'm providing you, which to date, there's been no response. Is this how the district treats an employee bringing forward safety, valid safety issues and harassment concerns? Why now, when enrollment has been historically low for this program, have they decided to shut it down? Were you aware there is currently a lab technician in the department working off the books for free to maintain the lab on weekends? There is another lab tech working out of classification. I was just notified of this fact today. And the district is currently advertising for a temporary lab tech on NeoGov, which I have right here. That said, the district, also when you look at the actual document for the layoff, there are so many errors in it. For example, his seniority date is not correct. There's no option for bumping rights. As were afforded the employees laid off from the bookstore. And he is not the least senior lab tech in the biological lab services department. Why is he being laid off? Those are just a few of the errors. Okay. So in light of this erroneously reported lack of work in the biology sciences department and the fact that Mr. Chason holds seniority within the and the fact that Mr. Chason holds seniority within the department, the federation requests that you as a board of trustees rescind this proposed layoff out of order of seniority and address the safety and harassment issues. And thank you.
May your motion to approve action item fourteen point two. There is, I'm sorry. Was there, was there a second also?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
In lieu of this.
Microphone. Microphone, Mike. Mike.
Sorry about that. Uh, Mr. President, in lieu of the information we received here, we need to, uh, read this and think about this before we vote on it. So, uh, I would hope that we could vote no on it and consider it at the December tenth meeting.
Any further discussion? Advice?
Yes, Mr. President. As a point of clarification, the notice of layoff is in advance of discussion or negotiation of effects of that layoff in which seniority and other issues would be discussed and decided. And this has nothing to do with health and safety or those kinds of things. The program has been suffering for a long time. The program is an active program discontinuance consideration in the academic senate. And because of the severely low enrollment, there will not be courses offered in that discipline for the spring or next fall.
Any further discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No.
Passes. Passes with three yes votes, two no votes. Mr. Reeves and Ms. Harvey voting nay. Fourteen point three, approval of the Emerald Valley Community College District and Emerald Valley Federation of Classified Employees, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, classification, reclassification process timeline. May your motion.
Second.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point four, approval of the award contract to PPL Incorporated for Executive Search Consultant Services. May your motion. Discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Reeves.
Yeah. It seems like we're going on the same track that we've always gone on to of hiring a, a college president. And we have a search committee, we, we put the word out, we get candidates, the search committee narrows it down. And in, in the end, the board decides something. This is a new time, uh, in, uh, college history. We, I believe that we should, we have many resources out there. The Community College League, Chancellor's Office, uh, media. We can, uh, put the word out that we have an opening for college president to apply. And if you do apply, you're going to be given a test to see if you hit the points. And if you hit the points, then you'll be reviewed and interviewed by the board. That's the way to do it. This is the same old process that goes on and all the councils and all the boards up here. We end up with people dissatisfied. Uh, I think we could do it differently. I would rather the money be spent to do what I suggested rather than have an executive search do the same stuff that we've always had. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, make point of clarification, please.
Certainly.
The recruitment and replacement of a superintendent president is set forth in board policy in, uh, which is directed by the league itself. We subscribe to that service. Further, it is set forth in accreditation standards and governance under standard four. The process of the executive search firm is to conduct a national search. The resources indicated in the prior discussion are statewide searches. The P, PPL will conduct a nationwide search in the process by which they go through the interview process and selection process is set forth in policy and the accreditation standards.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
As with four yes votes, one no vote, Mr. Reeves. Item fourteen point five, approval of contract with MGT of America Consultant LLC for continued services of the classification compensation study for classified employees. May your motion.
Second.
Discussion? I have a speaker card, Pamela Ford.
I'm asking you as board members to not approve this contract as there's a negotiated process in place which the Board of Trustees and the federation have agreed to negotiate it and signed off on. The federation intends to adhere to the negotiated classification process and vehemently objects to the district's continued pursuit of seeking avenues to go around the collectively bargained agreement and thereby willfully participating in a unilateral departure from the contract, which it repeatedly, repeatedly has entered into with the federation. This matter will lead to an unfair labor practice. So again, we request that this contract not be approved.
Discussion?
Mr. President, Mr. Reeves. I figure it'd be beneficial if we had somebody from this, uh, consulting firm come up and explain what, uh, what they actually do. Does anybody know what they do specifically? Uh, I think it should be defeated and these people come up and explain what they're going to do before we vote the hires on. Thank you.
Mr. President, a point of clarity, please.
Sure.
This contract was awarded over a year ago to, for the purpose of classification research only, not to go around the negotiation process purely for research and the collection of information. This is extended and I might ask that, uh, Ms. Laura Benson further clarify if she would, please, where we are and why we need the continuation.
Um, yes, um, we have been utilizing the service. They've been researching for us and we, with the change in HR leadership, there were a few things that were missed. We're trying to get those few things finished and it's just for a small bit. And that's what this is. It's not to redo the contract. It's for about five, six thousand dollars to finish the project in total.
Further discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Passes with four yes votes, Mr. Reeves voting nay. Fourteen point six, approval of consultant service agreement for Phaedra Kelly to assist in delivering SCI specialized care and increment trainings via Zoom for the period of November ninth, twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. May your motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point seven, approval of agreement between Shaba, Shabo, Los Pacitas Community College and Emerald Valley Community College for the California Early Childhood Mentor Program from September first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. May your motion.
Some move.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point eight, approval of agreement between Baby to Baby and Emerald Valley Community College District to provide donated items to ABC students who have dependent children. May your motion.
Second.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point nine, approval of the memorandum of understanding between Emerald Valley Community College with foundation for California community colleges for the Vision Resource Center project. May your motion. Discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Reeves.
If I had my legal counsel, uh, I don't know if this comes up, I believe.
Any further discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with four yes votes and one abstention. Could you please let, let Mr. Reeves back in? Well, he can go out again if he wants. Item fourteen point ten, approval of service agreement with Wallace Family Eye Care for Services to students. May your motion.
Some move.
Discussion?
President, I have my counsel, I think if I had.
Further discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with four yes votes, one abstention. Can we have Mr. Reeves come back in? Item fourteen eleven, approval of agreement with Scion Advisory Services for student housing. May your motion.
Second.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point twelve, approval of resolution number twenty-one dash twenty-two slash five for the futility of public bidding for respiratory care simulators. May your motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point thirteen, approval of the purchase AV equipment and labor installation from Golden Star Technology Incorporated for the boardroom AV refresh with Herf funds. May your motion.
Second.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point fourteen, approval of utilized the Gov Connection Piggyback Agreement number CNRO one four eight three with ENI Cooperative Services, ENI with Herf Funds. May your motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point fifteen, approval of negotiate contract with NCX Group for IT Security Services with Herf Funds. May your motion.
Second.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point sixteen, approval of the purchase computer equipment from Dell for, with Herf Funds. May your motion.
Second.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with the five yes votes. Item fourteen point seventeen, approval to purchase computer equipment from Apple with Herf Funds. May your motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point eighteen, approval to purchase AV equipment and labor installation from Golden Star Technology Incorporated with Herf Funds. May your motion.
Some move.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point nineteen, approval to enter into an agreement with Amazon Web Services using GSA Piggyback Contract with Herf Funds. May your motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point twenty, approval of the purchase network equipment with Any Systems Incorporated and utilize the Any Systems Piggyback Contract with California Multiple Award Schedule CMAS with Herf and Major AV Funds. May your motion.
Some move.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point twenty-one, approval of the least quadrant mailing system machine for the district using a cooperative piggyback agreement through NASPO Value Point Contract Number eighty SPO sixteen dash one six nine nine zero one. May your motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point twenty-two, approval of field contract for services with Frontier Communications Corporation on the infrastructure project seventeen dash zero two nine with major AV funds. May your motion.
Some move.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point twenty-three, approval to utilize Polaris Sales Incorporated's Piggyback Agreement through Sourcewell. May your motion.
Second.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point twenty-four, approval of utilized the approved cooperative piggyback agreement for Snap-on Industrial, a division of IDSC Holdings Inc., LLC with NASPO Value Point. May your motion.
Some move.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point twenty-five, approval to extend the use of the Arvin Union School District Cooperative Agreement with Sierra School Equipment Company through November twelfth, twenty twenty-two. May your motion.
Second.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point twenty-six, approval of agreement with Southern California Edison on the infrastructure project seventeen dash zero two nine with major AV funds. May your motion. Discussion? Mr. Reeves? What was that? I'm sorry, but just microphone, please.
Could someone, Mr. President, come up and explain, uh, what this is about?
I'll ask Ron Benedetti to do it, but this is the infrastructure and power to the college and Southern Cal Edison's role in developing and completing the infrastructure project. I'll let Ron finish.
Uh, this portion of it has to do with the intersection and the work being, uh, scheduled to be done out on Thirty Street. We have to move the overhead wires underneath. So we had, they had to develop prints. We paid them for that. Now this is their portion of the job that we have to pay Edison to do the, the work underground.
So how much is this going to cost?
I'm sorry?
What's the cost?
Two hundred and fifty-seven thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars and forty-eight cents.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point twenty-seven, approval to extend the use of Sean Khan Consulting Company Incorporated, DBA SKC Company Piggyback Agreement through September second, twenty twenty-five, major AV funds. May your motion.
Second.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Fourteen point twenty-eight, approval of project assignment amendment to Nolan Construction Services for Project Inspector of Record Services, Discovery Lab Project with Major AV Funds. May your motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Fourteen point twenty-nine, approval of change orders for infrastructure seventeen dash zero two nine with major AV funds. May your motion.
Some move.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point thirty, approval of change order for Sage Hall seventeen dash zero three one with major AV funds. May your motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point thirty-one, approval of change orders for Discovery Lab Project seventeen dash zero three nine with major AV funds. May your motion.
Some move.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point thirty-two, approval of change orders with the campus security project seventeen dash zero four zero with major AV funds. May your motion.
Second.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point thirty-three, approval of the file notice of completion and resolution of acceptance on the infrastructure project seventeen dash zero two nine, Taft Electric Company with Major AV Funds. May your motion.
Second.
Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fourteen point thirty-four, approval of the final notice of completion, resolution of acceptance on the campus security project seventeen dash zero four zero, Taft Electric Company with Major AV Funds. May your motion. Discussion? Advice?
I approve.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes with five yes votes. Item fifteen, information items, fifteen point one. Item fifteen, information items, fifteen point one, progress report on corrective action plan to address the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit findings. That is in your packet. Please review that. Item sixteen, reports and announcements, sixteen point one, Academic Senate, Dan Ryder.
Good evening, board members. Hope all's well. Short report. Last week, I was able to represent AVC at the Academic Senate California Community College Plenary. The plenary is held both in the fall and in the spring. At the plenary, resolutions are passed that offer positions of the academic state senate. In addition, there are workshops or breakouts on a variety of subjects. This particular theme of the fall plenary was teaching, learning, and governance in a hybrid world. In particular of interest, and that I'll share information to various constituent groups and other avenues as as needed, was the focus on the legislation that's impacting teaching and learning. In addition, the ethnic studies requirement that is, that faces all the systems from CSU as a connect to community colleges. In addition, for the best practices on online teaching and which includes accessibility and equity in online education. And finally, one of the, excuse me, the key themes was applying equity theory and equity practice in all that we're doing, both in the classroom and our hiring processes. And so I appreciate the opportunity to go to the plenary and the board's support. Finally, the other theme that was ever present was the council and the recommendation for the academic senate to continue to build relationships with not only the campus constituents, but also the board of trustees in its, again, in its recommendation of academic and professional matters. And I continue to look forward and building that positive relationship with the board and with President Knitson. So thank you.
Anlau Valley College Federation of Teachers, Dr. Orberg.
Good evening, everybody. It's really only been three weeks since the last meeting, so I don't have much new material to report. The COVID pandemic continues. We've actually had a meeting that hasn't really focused on it, so I think that's a relief to all of us, but it does continue. Faculty and staff are still being exposed on campus. Students are still being exposed. In news that should surprise exactly no one, quite a few faculty, staff, and students are struggling right now. In lab this morning, as I walked around to all the tables with the students and asked them how they're doing, nobody said good or anything enthusiastic. They were all tired and worried and stressed. And, you know, to some extent, November is always like that. It's a tough part of the semester. There's all the term projects. There's exams. There's transfer applications. People are nervous about upcoming finals, but I have to say, this did seem worse than usual, and it was disappointing. When I've spoken with faculty in the hallways and so forth, I'm receiving a lot of the same responses right now. There's a lot of weary people right now on this campus. I did notice an acknowledgement in last week's academic affairs report from VP Savor of appreciation and respect for how much faculty do. And it is kind of her to acknowledge the hard work of the faculty, but I would like to encourage the college administration to continue to think about how to best support faculty, staff, and students through the pandemic as it continues. I know we're all ready for it to end, but it hasn't quite ended yet. I would like to highlight a small bit of good news. A number of the students at the prison have finished their degrees from Cal State LA. Many of these students took AVC classes from AVC instructors. I actually taught there myself in twenty nineteen, and I have been so delighted to see press coverage of the graduate, of the graduates, including recognizing some of my students. Some of them have even been released from prison. All of this coverage showcases the transformative power of education. It's pretty extreme when we watch people graduating from college in the prison, but this kind of thing is happening on our campus as well. This is important. Faculty are so glad to serve and be part of transforming students' lives, whether it's in the prison, on the main campus, at Palmdale Online, or other locations. In closing, the faculty union is still here. We're still fighting to defend the rights and better the working conditions of the faculty. I'd like to donate the rest of my speaking time tonight to Ms. Ford. Thank you.
Item sixteen point three, Anlau Valley College Federation of Teachers, my employee, Ms. Ford. Microphone?
First and most importantly, I want to thank Rhonda for getting us the reports timely. And also, it's not, it's more than just classified reports, so it appears that we've been heard. So thank you. As president of the classified union, I am ultimately responsible for maintaining our charter and ensuring that our finances are in order. I am not allowed to slip in this area. Both the national organization, the American Federation of Teachers, and the state organization, the California Federation of Teachers, maintain strict regulations regarding finances as the keepers of the treasury of these organizations. In order to participate in various aspects of the organization, our books have to be straight, and there's no wiggle room when it comes to allowing debt to grow. If per caps are late, we're notified immediately. As everyone knows, finances are the lifeblood of any organization. Anlau Valley College is well aware of maintaining proper finances and not allowing debt to accrue. As an example, when the district was made aware of an outstanding electric bill, immediate steps were made to correct that matter immediately, even though we were in a fiscal crisis at the time. Another example is when the district switched over to fiscal independence and the new banner system was employed for payroll, there were errors made over payments. Did the district allow either of those to carry debt over for years? No. The district required immediate resolution in both instances, which brings me to my point. Who is responsible for the treasury at Anlau Valley College? Who answers for the fact that since two thousand eighteen, when PERB ruled in its decision, appeals were made and ruled on, the Supreme Court ruled in favor of PERB's decision? The decision is not being litigated, yet seven percent interest has been accruing, and there's been no attempt on the part of the district to satisfy this debt. Why has the district not at least mitigated a portion of its obligation by at least compensating those who have separated from the district, such as retirees or those who have left for other reasons? Those individuals could have been settled in two thousand eighteen when the decision was first issued. No, instead, there seems to be a deliberate decision to allow the seven percent interest to grow for those individuals. And I have to ask why? Why does the board of trustees sanction the district to be fiscally irresponsible by not, by not satisfying its obligation? We are now going into December twenty twenty-one, moving into eight years of interest accruing. It is not, it is unconscionable that the board of trustees is allowing this debt to grow, and what's more, ignoring the court's decision. Let us ignore a decision, and y'all are all over us like a duck on a June bug. I would ask, it is the district's intent, is it the district's intent to allow this interest to grow until the new president takes office, as though somehow this is going to remove responsibility from the individual who created the issue in the first place? What is the rationale behind the district not settling this matter? I'd just like to know, and so would my constituent group.
Confidential management supervisor administrator employees, Michelle Hernandez.
Good evening. For CMS, we're still in our very early stages of pulling together our new board. We met first, our first meeting today, so we are moving forward in our plans and pulling information from our surveys and evaluations. One of the things that I do want to bring to the board's attention is that there are many CMS who are working together collaboratively across campus for registration. Priority registration begins on Monday. There will be a huge registration week full of activities to get our students ready for the spring semester, workshops, as well as virtual assistance and on-campus assistance. And then we are all collectively working together for the Reg Fest, repeat event that we will have on December sixth. Thank you.
Associate Student Organization, Ms. M.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, we have our next meeting next Friday, well, this Friday actually, and it will be our last meeting for the semester unless we have an emergency or a closed-door meeting. It will be the last one for the semester, like I just said. And during our last meeting, we had a couple of discussions and a couple of items approved. The first one was that we approved to move funds from one bank to another. The bank that we're moving it to is a bank that will incur interest. The last bank that we are moving it from did not incur interest at the time, so that's why we are moving it. We are still working on the volunteer program. Our advisor informed us that she was bringing someone in to assist with that task. We're hoping to have it up and running before the end of spring semester, as that is one of our goals for the twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two goals that we set. We, we approve student incentives to increase participation in the school. You've heard of one of the students, or one of the incentives that we approved, the Constitution Day essay. The ASO officers, we discussed, we discussed the death studies courses and the modem that they're being offered in. A public comment was brought up a while ago, and one of our members was concerned about it, so he brought it back up again, and we discussed why they were the only foreign language class to have to take their classes over Zoom. We discussed the spring schedule and students possibly wanting to another area to socialize among themselves. The library is a place where you study. The subway place is the place where people eat and talk amongst themselves, and we're looking for a place kind of like a mix among that for students. Unfortunately, the Senator of Career Technical Education resigned. They had to prioritize what was more important in their life. They were offered a job, and they took the job, and understandably, they had to focus on school, their children, and the job. While it is sad to see them go, I am very happy that they were offered and took on the job. The haunting of Marauder Street, the haunting of Marauder Street happened October twenty ninth, and it was great. Several community members came and partook in it. I was there myself. It was a very fun and relaxing event for students to partake in and their costumes. And lastly, we're looking into a continuous suicide awareness program. It came up last meeting. Since we are entering the holidays, this is a tough time for many students, and instead of just having a suicide awareness program focused on the holidays, we were advised that maybe look at having the program throughout the year in a continuous fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anlau Valley College Foundation, Diane Knippel.
Good evening. The volunteer program, I believe the foundation, I have an employee who's going to be helping that volunteer program, so we're glad to participate. We know the community pretty well and maybe can make some connections for you. Just remember, this is the month of November. It's a lot of Giving Tuesdays and Giving Days, so we are here to help our students have great resources through the Hearts and Hands pantry, and we do have two community partners that will match every dollar for dollar given. So please give frequently and often. Even a dollar makes a difference. So thank you.
Thank you. Office's superintendent, President, Mr. Knutson.
Just a couple of very quick things. First of all, I love the energy of the constitutional essay question of John Vento. I've had the opportunity to be in his classroom, and it's hard to not walk out of the class with a smile on your face. He's an amazing instructor, and as you can tell, he usually doesn't need a microphone. But I'm so pleased that John has carried that over these nine years and continues to grow the program. It's a real pleasure to see the growth with the students. The scheme I might recommend, if the volunteers are going to work in conjunction with the college to get board approved, they must go through HR, and then they will be protected by the college and the college insurance as an enrolled student in doing volunteer work either here on campus or in the community. Registration for spring begins on November fifteenth, and we encourage everybody to get the word out, please. System-wide community college system of California is down fifteen percent, over three hundred and twenty thousand students. So we all need to pitch in. Couple of other things that are kind of fun. May sixth is commencement this year, May sixth at seven PM in the stadium for the class of twenty twenty-two. On Wednesday, May fourth, we are going to invite back the classes of twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one if they want to cross the platform and receive the jacket and get the picture taken and be in regalia. We're going to make that opportunity available to them. ABC has been nominated for the class of twenty twenty-three for the Aspen Prize for Community College Excellence. We've been chosen as one of the top hundred and fifty colleges in the country, and we have been nominated to compete for a million-dollar prize with other colleges. California has a lion's share of colleges across the country because we have the lion's share of community colleges in the country. And lastly, and to all of my fellow veterans, on this Thursday, November eleventh, the college will be closed, and remember, it's a Veterans Day, and it began at the end of World War One, when on the eleventh day, at the eleventh hour in the eleventh month, the guns of World War One fell silent. And it was first recognized as Armored Systems Day and then became Veterans Day a few years later, in action of Congress. Ask that you remember all of the folks in your lives who have served and remember them either outwardly or in your thoughts, and when you remember them in your thoughts, put a face to the name, please. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member comments, Ms. Rivera.
Thank you. First, I would like to congratulate my fellow students for winning the Constitutional Day Essay Contest, and also thank Professor Vento and all the people involved in reading the essays and putting on the contest. We're very grateful for you all. Today is also First Generation College, First Generation College Student Day for all First Generation students. So I would also like to extend a happy First Generation College Day to all those students, and I am also proud to be a First Generation College student. Thank you, Dr. Vines, and everyone involved in trying to improve enrollments. We do appreciate your hard work, and we're seeing it pay off. I would also like to encourage everyone to participate in the winter coat drive and toy drive if you can, and thank, and I would also like to extend my thanks to all veterans for their service, especially with this upcoming Veterans Day.
Thank you. Ms. Irving?
Yes, I would like to thank the Associated Student Union for the consideration and work of continuous mental health support year-round. That is a big deal, and I'm very proud of you all for thinking about that and trying to put some things in place to support students. As second of all, Veterans Day, I wanted to remind everyone of that. You know, we all have our own opinions, perspectives, and points of view, but it doesn't change the fact that we live in the greatest country on this planet. And it is definitely due to the sacrifice of our servicemen and women. So I agree with President Knitson. Please keep those who have served in your thoughts. And last but not least, the constitutional essay winners, I think it's really important. As we heard Mr. Reeves say earlier, it is a republic, and it's very important for all of us to understand what the constitution is about and how important it is. And as a And as a former English teacher, I think any essay contest is a great contest. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Mr. Reeves.
I want to wish all the veterans a happy Veterans Day. I come from a military family and a gold star family, which means you lost a service member in in your family. So happy Veterans Day. Lancaster is going to have a ceremony at nine o'clock in Lancaster Cemetery. Palmdale is going to have a ceremony at eleven o'clock in front of City Hall in Palmdale. So if you get a chance, go to one of those ceremonies. And I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Out in the audience, on the board, everybody have a great Thanksgiving. Be careful and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaines.
Am I pronouncing that correct?
It's pronounced Nigeem.
Nigeem. Anyway, I can't agree with you more about the the impact that COVID has had on the social, emotional, and the mental health of our young people. I do have a curriculum or a program that you might want to look into. You can at least research this program. It's called Hope Squad, and maybe it's something that the community college could could purchase to benefit our young people, because I think we're seeing it at all ages from elementary on up through college that are having some anxiety and depression after this COVID, so we want to address that. I also want to just, you know, acknowledge it's Thursday is a day off, but yet we don't want to forget why we have that day. I too came from a military family and I'm very sentimental every year because my father, my grandfather, and my uncles all served in the military, and so I think about them a lot on Veterans Day, and I'm sure as do many, so it's great, as President Knutson said, to put a face with that with that name, so. And I just want to say that a week or so ago, we opened the Sage Learning Center, and it was a very proud moment. I felt so you know, I really couldn't put it in words just because I was one of those students probably back when it was called, what did you call it, Mr. Knutson? Tumbleweed Tech. I never thought of it quite as tumbleweed tech. I thought I was at a pretty big place at the time, but I I was absolutely amazed at the Learning Center and and the possibilities and the capacity that we're going to build in a lot of our young people who who take advantage of that building, so that that was quite an accomplishment and 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 very, very pleased. It was, it's not to mention how beautiful it is. Makes me want to come back to school, which Mr. Knutson reminded me today that I'm still having an email as a student, so why not? And I just too want to say I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving and gets to spend some quality time with family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buffalo.
Say the Sage Hall building and that we were in and celebrated last week is just spectacular visually. It is an amazing building, both outside and inside. And I'm not so sure that it would have been a great learning environment for me, because there's so many windows. I'd have probably been checking out the birds and the butterflies and people walking across campus, but it is really open. It's really airy, and I think it was amazing. It's much, much more impressive than I had expected it to be when it was first designed. That's it.
Thank you. There's no need to go back into closed session, and the date of our next meeting is December tenth, twenty twenty-one. That is a Friday, and it is at eight AM, so a little bit of a change of pace because the legislature wants to keep us on our toes. And we are adjourned.